What's going on?
In the green dress.
We're not getting this out there, right?
No. All right, uh, let's get back. And let's start with the coroner.
How was lunch, everybody?
Good.
Good.
It was good.
There's probably extra in the corner.
I went over to give you guns.
Oh, nice.
Pizza Hut's good enough?
Well, I didn't know if it was for us or if it was for us. If it was, Mike, we literally had Pizza Hut last night.
Oh, you did?
Okay.
Thank you, David. Yes, thank you, David.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I start? I told Counselor Williams just after the last session, uh, the way the, uh, Counselor Reiner, as well, when I saw him, the way the budget process, uh, has went this year, I think, uh, is really, really good. I think it, uh, tracked it last, at the end of last year, Counselor Williams said, hey, I'm gonna structure this. I think there's a way to speed things up, um, and it showed, and I appreciate the effort that everyone put into making that happen.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
You must have two positions, you.
It doesn't really start in the top.
Sure, it's like, one and a half, forgot it.
Hey, you are something. We don't give those compliments when we pay his bills.
Smart man, smart man.
Absolutely.
Justin, I have in my notes that forty-one cases predicted in twenty twenty-five after those comments, it might be forty-two cases.
Uh, oh, 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 seven. Sorry, sorry.
So, we're not starting with, we're starting with, sorry.
Coroner.
Okay, I mean, we're not doing salaries yet?
Right.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We've got some, we've got some lines we need to finish.
I think I didn't realize that Dan and I probably were in salaries.
At the end of last, uh, session, uh, there was discussion on changing, like, the autopsy line. And there was, uh, I had to go back and do some calculations on that.
Okay.
Um, I brought it back and, uh, presented it, uh, to you then.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So.
And he, and I just, over the last forty-eight, seventy-two hours, we've had some discussion about the ten thousand dollar request. For on-call, so we met with legal counsel briefly this morning, and it's set to, we're just table it, scrap it for now. So, there's this back and forth on, like, what constitutes on-call, the pay, and what is the FL?
FLSA.
FLSA, so legal counsel's going back to give them a proper legal opinion, just because Mr. Sparks told us about a big payout that they got because of, you know, a lawsuit.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're gonna table that, and we're not, we're just not gonna do anything with it.
Yeah, so that, uh, the way the policy reads it is the two hundred dollars per week for somebody that's on-call, 'cause I think the general understanding of that is, you have one employee that's on-call a week for gets, gets that statement. The way my per diem employees are scheduled, they do it twelve-hour increments. In order to not exceed the policy, I had taken the two hundred dollars, divided by one hundred and sixteen hours, which comes up with basically that segment of it, uh, that two hundred dollars, so it basically means signing hourly rate of payment, and so I think that's where the legal opinion.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, so until we figure that out, we'll just leave it alone. All right.
Um, let's, uh, just, we did that, so are we leaving it in there?
I would say take it out.
We take it out until?
Yeah, until we find out the ramifications.
Um, he is asking for two new administrative assistant positions.
So, those compliments were. I'm kidding, hey, I thought, I thought it was brilliant. Keep going.
Yeah, so we talked about this at the, uh, last, um, the last time we met and went through this, uh, line item. So, uh, I utilize, or my biggest struggle right now, as we're moving into our new building, um, is our daytime, um, basically daytime staffing. Most of my employees are per diem employees, meaning they're on-call, they have other jobs and that type of, they have other lives. Uh, so, uh, looking at how do we operate our, our new team, uh, in the new facility, uh, some of the other surrounding counties have created, uh, administrative assistants slash deputy coroner, so they're administrative assistants that are trained investigators for the coroner's office, um, and they, um, are able to do the functions, 'cause someone calling us is asking for very specific stuff when it comes to death certificates, reports, there's lots of legal requests that come in, uh, for documents and stuff like that, um, so they would be able to meet those requirements, but in addition to, uh, we can cover those more challenging times of our schedule, uh, to keep the schedule, um, asked for. When we talked last time, I talked about, uh, this would be, um, two part-time employees, uh, I spoke with, uh, human resources and came up with, what was the nearest, um, job position, uh, with the, I think it's their new term for the people that write the salary stuff? Is it person one?
First person.
First person, first person.
First person.
First person to change names.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, they came up with like an administrative assistant type thing, so basically I was asking for, uh, two part-time positions for twenty-four hours a week, so, um, at, uh, a pay rate of twenty dollars an hour, which gave us the forty-nine, um, nine, uh, twenty for the year for those two part-time positions. So, right now, it's, uh, my chief deputy and I working, um, and then we would have the two part-time people that would, uh, fill that, what I feel is a pretty vital role, um, and help us cover those, those hours that we have a hard time covering.
Is that something that is needed, like, something like being there all the time?
So, it's two parts, so our phone rings every day, all through the day, um, we, we have stuff that comes in and out, and then we have cases that we, we do during the daytime as well.
And how's that handled now?
Shane and I handle it, Shane and I handle it all.
And then, Justin, I have in my notes from August fourteenth, grant funding has helped with respect to the new building. Do any of those grants get to help with respect to any payroll?
The grant that we do, um, there's a, Indiana State Department of Health grant that they put out, um, they have historically have already put it out by this point this year. Uh, they have not, I got an email since the last time we met saying that it's gonna be a fall grade award, award situation. So, basically, the trade is the State Department of Health, um, needs vital statistics and information from our office, um, and it's how they track that stuff. So, we provide that information, they provide, the exchanges we utilize, it's called the Indiana Coroner Case Management System, so it's an electronic, uh, case reporting system. They provide that to us for free, um, they provide all the infrastructure and support for that for us, um, and that allows us, uh, and then the exchanges, they do a grant program. Typically, the first phase of the grant is based off of how many overdoses, uh, in cases that meet the criteria that they're looking for, they award you each county points, and that translates to a dollar amount that you're allowed to give, like, personal protective equipment, investigations equipments. So, they do a first award of that grant, and then whatever pile of money is left over after that, um, it's a first come, first served. Every year that we've done it, we've been awarded both of those grants, so it's not for a personnel type standpoint, it's something that we use to offset the cost of the disposable goods that we use, uh, like body bags and, uh, carrying type stuff.
I, uh, I always appreciate your efforts and reporting and coming in and we had this conversation.
Yeah.
You've had the largest budget increase in the last four years of the agency.
Yes, yes, uh, and, uh, and I appreciate you talking, I apologize, it was relatively short, I was standing outside of Pizza Hut. My wife was looking quite annoyed at me, uh, when I said, I gotta take this, um, so I know we didn't get into the super details on that. Um, so, uh, the council that sits here today, um, there are a few of you that were here when, uh, with the previous administrations. Uh, I brought every, everything that I've ever brought here, so our office, uh, was not necessarily meeting the requirements of our office, uh, in previous administrations. It was essentially, uh, a person who operated it off of a phone, um, we had a very small office space, we didn't write reports, we weren't doing the things that we truly, like, A, the things that we needed to meet our legal obligations, and certainly not the obligations to our community and the families we were serving. So, the first year was a year that I, um, took over, the first year as an elected official, you were operating off of the budget of the person who worked, uh, before you. Um, and I found this, this is the very first thing I gave to the, uh, council here, uh, and it, my, took that first year to demonstrate, modernize, um, and show value in the office. So, I was able to, I'm a systems person, I'm kind of a structures person, how do things work, um, so yes, our budget has went up, um, substantially where it had been historically, but what this community gets from our office is a completely different thing. We are responsive, we go, we've not missed a single run since the time that I took over. We have a tiered system of doing things where we're supporting each other and making sure we're doing things. Our law enforcement partners aren't waiting for us to get there, our families are not waiting for us, our families are, have to try and track us down to get death certificates in a timely manner. We're doing so much more, um, as we went, increased on that. Um, I have done my absolute very best to, every time I've, I've come to the council with things to come with, basically data-driven, um, data-driven, basically plans, uh, to grow and develop our office in a way that is, is legitimately doing the best we can do for our families. And, uh, I know it's cost more to do that, but it's, we're not doing what we should have been doing. And so, Counselor Williams, it was awesome, last night, you got my head scratching, so, uh, a few things happened. I returned to my office and I'm like, I need to see this data visually, so I came in and, uh, I'm gonna just call this, I went full nerd mode, and, uh, pulled up everything that I've done before, pulled up everything and like showing myself, like, visually, like, I literally FaceTimed my wife, who was unamused completely to the fact that I was doing this, and I'm like, I need to be able to show, like, where we are, where we're going, and what it was like before, and I like flipped the, I mean, she's like, looking at me like, are you serious? And I'm like, does this chart look better like this visualization, or does this chart look like this better visualization? Um, so, yeah.
Like Sheriff Ferris is looking at you now?
I think, like, I think it's.
I didn't look at his chart.
I think it's fair to say, uh, the world needs dorks like, uh, me, uh, to try and look and process that thing.
I'm just wondering when you have a bit full nerd mode.
But even though I'm sure of the true capacity, uh, we had a county softball tournament, uh, I'm sorry, I digress. We had a county softball tournament, uh, the other weekend, everyone knows me fairly seriously, in my fire department life and outside of here, I'm kind of an animated character. Uh, my, my daughters don't like it, so I have a lot of, like, really century shirts. So, we were playing the sheriff's department, we were not slated to win, my captain informed me that I needed to talk some trash, so the sheriff's department team was having a meeting. I came out with a cat taco button-up shirt with a sea captain's hat and a pike, and, uh, walked up and I said, I'm playing catcher today, I expect everything to be full contact at the plate, and I'm gonna talk a lot of trash, kinda, and I spilled out there, um, so, uh, yes, it's okay, I sometimes that book.
So, the short answer is, things have improved.
Massively, yes.
I'm just, I just, once again, you've had a significant increase in the budget.
Yes.
And now they, Kenny said, hey, now you're adding more staff.
Yes, so, and, you know, you kick around this idea, so I try and keep things as inexpensive as humanly possible. Uh, the utilization of the per diem employees is a way that, uh, we accomplish the mission, it's the way we've historically accomplished the mission, um, but it's very challenging from a staffing and management standpoint, um, when you're asking people to be on-call for a period of time and the compensation is luck of the draw, do I have a run today, do I have three runs a day? They're doing the job because they care about the community and they care about doing the job, not because they're making, uh, that. So, like, if I had to, like, shake it up and we had to, like, really truly reform it, I'd come in and say, hey, I wanted to hire, you know, like, three full-time people, we would have, like, actual, like, full-time investigators, um, and then we could get away from doing that. I don't think we're there yet, when we look above the horizon, maybe in five years, maybe in ten years, as the growth gets there, that's kind of the next phase. And when I provided my budget presentation, uh, the hard cottony for this one, I talked about that three-year, uh, over-the-horizon kind of viewpoint is, there's gonna come a time when we have to look at that. Boot County's grown substantially, um.
So, you, if we did this, you would have four people plus yourself.
So, I would have myself, my chief deputy, and I would have two part-time people, those were the people that would have the sun down.
Who's the, uh, crime scene investigator, deputy crime scene investigator?
Those are.
That's the same, that's the same, what's that?
No, go ahead.
Where are you sitting at?
Those are all, those are all his deputies, so he has, he has about, what, twelve?
So, I think I have six, like, active ones right now.
Active, okay, active deputies, did they get paid per death run?
Okay.
Per autopsy, and then per training?
And for training.
Yeah, so the investigation is the initial death call.
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I get it now.
Yeah.
Then you just got the, the chief deputy coroner.
Yep, yes.
Person that's in the office.
Yes, correct.
What is the count, I mean, we're in a hundred and ten to fifteen? Autopsies a year, or?
So, it, uh, so it's very fascinating, when I first, so, when I first took over, um, our office was aver, averaging taking about seventy percent of the cases that we were called to, to autopsy, so, but we can be called to anything. As my team, as we put in some training, as we developed our, our skills and got experience, now we exclude about seventy percent, where we, we don't have to do it. So, the numbers have kind of, uh, inverted as far as the amount of autopsies, um, that we take, so thirty to forty percent of our total call volume will go to fully.
And your call volume is what?
Okay, stand by. I've got it here.
He's got.
So, we did a hundred and forty-two last year, um.
What was your prediction last year?
I was one forty, it's here, if you give me a second, try and flip through, we've always been very close, we're predicted to be less than where we were at last year.
So, in doing that, while you're looking at that, do you have any other, any other additions to your budget besides these two employees?
Uh, yes, so the things that we've asked for on that, so you had those two there, we, I've talked about the, uh, on-call portion, that's next. Uh, the presented budget, I'd asked for, uh, mental health, um.
Think we got a solution for that?
Okay, so that's good, um, I did, uh, office supplies for one thousand dollars to two thousand dollars, we're going into a new thing, and then, um, the twenty-two thousand dollars we talked about on the biohazardous regulated waste, um, and then I asked for five thousand dollars for cleaning supplies, where we're in a clean, uh, like, sterilized clean, and that is the only, you know, like, change of service.
You came down on your autopsy fees too.
I did.
And then you also told us that you were anticipating decreasing office supplies next year, this was just like.
Yes, this is the one time I'm not a hundred percent sure how much it's gonna take to actually fill up offices and, uh, the.
Well, what was the reason autopsy fees went down?
So.
Thirty-five thousand, huh? Or thirty-five thousand?
That number, uh, so, two parts, uh, when that number had went up, um, over the course of my time, our caseload, uh, was essentially explosive during the pandemic period, and it wasn't because of the pandemic. Uh, we, we looked at our charts, our caseload went up substantially over that first three years. This is the first year that it's come back down. Now, uh, during that time, the fee for the autopsy went from fifteen hundred dollars to twenty-two hundred dollars, uh, when the council asked about this, I went back down, so I factored that plus or minus, like, four percent of the normal caseload, three percent of that normal caseload every year to build a number, I don't wanna come back to you. Um, so, when the council asked me that, I went back to my computer, I went full nerd mode, had some sticky notes, had the cell thing up there, looked at the numbers, calculated off of what things were at, and that is a much less of a cushion, um, but on a downward trending year, um, then hopefully that's a more return to normalcy, and that'll be a safer number for us to use.
Thank you.
On the biohazard disposal, would we be able to lock in a contract by the end of the year?
So, I have.
For, for that firm number?
Yeah, I ha, I have, I have that.
Okay.
I have those, that proposed contract available. I mean, it's a, it's not a contract, it's a service agreement.
A service agreement, yeah, okay. It's, it's us.
Feedback.
It's feedback, and Sean was here, he can turn it down, but he hasn't come back yet.
Counselor Reiner, question on caseload, uh, so during my term, so we started at, uh, one thirty-four twenty, twenty-one, jumped to one forty-three on twenty twenty-two, one forty-eight on twenty twenty-three, and that caseload, so I keep this chart that looks like this, uh, based down by month, so I can look from trend to trend to trend, and as we go through the month, like, when I did this one, we were averaging, so it was factual numbers through July, the average of January through July for caseload predicted nine point seven cases per month for the remaining month, uh, I have found that doing it that way is a very good predictor of where we're gonna be at, so we're gonna be down from where we, we were in the past.
Did you think of like thirty, forty percent of those are actually autopsies?
Yes, yeah, so thirty to forty percent of those are actually autopsies, yes.
And then I have in my notes for twenty twenty-five, your prediction is you'll have additional forty-one cases, I think.
Yeah, so that, that was my cases, uh, no, those should be my cases remaining for that year.
Okay, remain, okay.
Yeah, so that was my predicted number of cases remaining for that year, for this year.
Thank you. So, with everything that we've gone through, the main thing is, uh, with these positions, the two new positions, whether the council, uh, wants to move forward with two part-time positions.
Can I, can I offer one last piece on that? So, no, no, can I, no, no. I see that.
But if you were one, you probably would've been like, is there emotion, is it, yeah, I would've went with it.
So, for, it, it's very difficult for us to hire people to get trained, so if I hire someone to fill one of my positions, uh, they, they have to go through the Indiana Coroner Trans Board, um, school. They offer it twice a year, it's usually in the fall, I've got, got one of my new employees going through it, uh, in this weekend, this weekend coming up. So, I have two opportunities to train them, so kind of the, this, Aaron and I talked, Counselor Williams, and I talked about this last night, I can throw people at the per diem problem and see what sticks, uh, or, and it just takes so much time to do it. When we, the first two years of this, we were trying to get this optimum solution where we had, everybody had the opportunity to work three or four shifts, and it was a good distribution. That's not the case anymore, uh, we're having large volumes of shifts, and we put it out to people to say, what are you willing to work? Um, I'm having a hard time getting those filled, I have a few people that do a really good job, and like, for instance, I had one person who picked up a ton of shifts this month, had knee surgery with an expected, like, week recovery time, they're still down, and now I'm scrambling to try and find people to help fill those gaps. So, going from a per diem solution, I, I'm in the process of onboarding two people, one going to school, one coming on there, um, it just takes a lot of time for me to do it. Having the part-time people that are there for those set hours each week is a guarantee that I'm gonna be able to adequately staff, and then use the per diem people for the shifts that are more likely to be filled, which are the overnight shifts, um, and the weekend shifts when they're available.
So, council, we need to make a decision, the mental health, uh, the insurance committee has looked at something, we're county-wide, the mental health, so I think, as Aaron said, we're, I think we're setting pretty good on that one.
Awesome.
Uh, the biohazard, uh, it sounds like that's where we need to start, but hopefully, you know.
Yeah, and I think that, that number, that the biohazard there is a maximum usage type number, I, I hope that we'll be under that.
Mine notes, I have that we approved everything except for on-call, the two positions in mental health, but that we approved everything else already in his.
Okay, so the only thing we're looking at is two positions.
On-call.
We haven't done anything with mental health.
So, is mental health?
I mean, not for.
Yeah, but we can do it county-wide, so we can take it out of his budget.
Right.
And, and also take out the on-call at this time, and then we just gotta decide on the position.
So, we're doing something with insurance for mental health?
Yes, the, the insurance committee, uh, working with, uh, with them, Dems on that committee and, and sharing.
There's a proposal that you, you have to.
That you gave us, okay.
When we get to it, yes.
Okay, so I would make a motion to, um, remove mental health from this budget, and then we're gonna remove on-call, but we're tabling it until we get an opinion from our legal counsel.
Second.
Should move to second, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, simply say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Thank you. Uh, so then the only thing we have is the two positions.
I make a motion to approve the administrative assistant, um, two positions as submitted.
And the twenty dollars an hour, and that's some, is what he's put in, so.
That's the max.
That is something that, you know, we're.
Is that where they fall on the wave study?
So, the weight, I don't wanna overstep, I would ask, there wasn't, so this is a blend of two things, uh, the weight study had an administrative assistant, uh, pay rate, which is a little bit less, uh, and then they had like an office manager position, which is a little bit more, I went with a blend of the, the lower one plus, uh, a little bit of additional because of the investigative component.
So, what does it come out to, twenty dollars an hour?
I'm sorry.
Does it come out to twenty dollars an hour?
That's the number that I came up with, yeah.
What you're saying is that, that one may be twenty dollars an hour, one may, may be eighteen, or?
Oh, no, I just, my proposal was twenty dollars an hour.
Okay, for, for all, okay, both, okay, thank you.
We, we do have some other part-time people at twenty, don't we?
We do, we have a couple other offices that are at twenty, um, with approval from the council.
Okay, yeah.
Could you?
You couldn't do just one assistant on the hours, and then you guys fill in the other two slots?
So, we're, we're there, uh, all the time, so my thought process on that, um, is, my, the way I have planned this in my brain is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, uh, most of our, uh, functions that we do are on Wednesdays, which gives us that overlap there, and then if somebody else was off, certainly we'll fill in the gaps, uh, wherever.
Ken. So, we need, we're gonna have a general part-time salary conversation when we do salaries, so can we wait and do it then?
Oh, you're the council.
Can we, can we do it then, and how do we go back to, to John's question? I heard it, and we're all discussing it.
John asked if he could go by with one.
Yeah, if, in other words, you and your assistant, and then another part-time, could juggle the hours around where you're covered, even if you're not actually in the office, you can always forward to your phone.
Yeah.
I don't know, that'd just be a compromise.
I'm gonna.
I don't know, it's stuff to use, if you think you can juggle it, make it work.
John, one second, she wants to amend her motion.
Sorry.
Okay.
It didn't second, that's our.
You haven't started a new motion, first off, you didn't second, so I.
Okay, so, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the two admin assistant positions, and we will come back to the amount as part of our general salary discussion.
I'll second. It's been properly moved and seconded, any further discussion?
The discussion now is whether we have two positions or one position.
Right, whether it, yeah, so, we, if somebody's got a comment, whether, and I think John's.
John, John's in the middle of discussion.
My, my question was, if you could get by with one, I mean, just if you'd be more hours for that part-timer, if I really have two.
In fact, I, I agree with the hours.
Yeah, there are, you said, what, twenty-four hours?
So, I was going for twenty-four hours.
If you go to twenty-eight, thirty hours in the week, it'd be, have them two.
Yeah, part-time could go up to like thirty hours, so could you get away with one at thirty hours?
One, I would love to have two, so that I had everyday coverage, I understand this is a new thing, if I had to come to a plea deal here, and you said for thirty hours, uh, I would like to have two, uh, be graciously, you said, whatever the council.
Be two at how many hours per week?
So, I did two at twenty-four, with the idea that we would have them scheduled on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We do some community engagement, uh, Q R P, our mental health, uh, we go out, and I think I talked about, we work with our mental health partners, and we go out and see all the non, or all the overdose and, um, substance abuse cases with mental health professionals, we do that on Wednesdays, um, having that overlap there gives us the opportunity to make sure that we're doing that as well.
So, to John's point, if you didn't have that other one, you would use this person, I'm sorry, you or your chief deputy would go out and help?
Yeah, so, my chief deputy goes out a lot, on a lot of them now.
Um, so, two at twenty-four hours would be forty at a week, but if you only give him one, that's thirty, so he's gotta make up eighteen hours.
Unless roughly, you and your chief deputy pick it up, the difference, I'm opposed.
I mean, if you're going thirty hours and there's a forty-hour week, there's ten hours to figure that out.
We can do one full-time.
What, it's eighteen?
Oh, you just said you could go.
I'd go one full-time.
Go one full-time, what would that, what would the, uh?
Then we gotta pay them, that's if we go full-time.
Yeah.
What's, yeah.
Yeah, that, that really ticks it off.
Yeah. But that, but that twenty dollars an hour for both of them working twenty-four hours a week, uh, forty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty, which is the notes that I had from August.
Yeah, that's what.
Twenty-four, forty-nine, nine, twenty. So, you keep it as easy as.
We, we do have a motion in a second?
Can I just ask?
Is, is there any further discussion issue?
Yeah, what would a full-time person cost, I understand benefits, um.
We, we've never had a full-time.
Jennifer, is that something that's easily accessible from NF, would it be administrative? Would the administrative assistant?
Administrative assistant plus, I, I add something because of their death investigative responsibilities, it's, it's more responsibility than just an administrative.
Got it, so, well, I'll give you two, so an assistant.
I'm just interested, for me, but.
An executive administrator. Thirty-five hours per week minimum would be twenty-four, forty, fifty-eight.
Twenty-four, what?
Fifty-eight, midpoint would be twenty-eight, twenty-eight, that's an executive administrator, though. An executive assistant. An executive assistant would be twenty-two, fifty-seven, minimum twenty-five, ninety-seven, midpoint.
So, and that's what I think, with this being new, I think it's, it kinda ease into it, and you. And you guys, Justin will be able to tell you exactly.
Yeah, so my initial proposal when I asked for this, I think I specifically put on there that I wanted to, you know, let's roll with this for the next several years and see as it goes.
Might be just next year.
Yeah.
Say, say this is how it's really working. It's kind of like what we're doing at the sheriff's department. It's a sole role into that. You just don't know what you're going into until you get in there, so. So we do have a motion?
Yeah.
A second?
I'm sorry, I'm just going to actually take the numbers times thirty-five hours a week times fifty-two? Forty-seven, two sixty-five. That's just, just wanted to get my, that's without benefits. That's all I have, I'm sorry.
So with that being said, you know, there's been some discussion on whether to go with one or two. The motion that's on the table is for the two positions. So with that being said, all those in favor, say if I say an aye.
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 Can I have to show hands, ayes? Okay, all opposed, same sign? Motion passes. And so we have for you.
All right, so I complimented you when I started. I have my complimentary again.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Are we done with the book now? No.
We're not done. So, I mean, we thought we were going to salary, but, okay, I believe you. Susan.
Jail lit.
Twelve thirty-three.
Twelve thirty-three. Is there anybody here who's in jail there?
No.
Anybody? Oh, sure.
One thing that.
What else do we have left?
Nick Parr's not here, so I'll say this. My road is not paved, so I'm saving money.
Hey, they just did mine.
Well, you're saving money too, John.
Chip and seal, chip and seal.
How many of us are saving your money?
Listen. Three hundred. What else?
I turned plunkets road out.
So we need.
All of the jail.
Oh. We do use it, he's in the exploration zone.
I have a list. I have a list.
All right.
We're going to start with project manager.
Okay.
I received a payroll change form that shows Nielsen is gone from the county. So I'm guessing that can be zero.
For next year's budget?
For next year's budget.
Yes.
Along with the benefit line of eighty-nine thousand dollars.
What line is, what is that benefit line?
The benefit line's the third line now.
Fifty-one, fifty-three.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I don't know that, maybe we ought to, maybe we ought to talk to Max, is he in here?
Well, that's what I'm asking, I'm just, this is something we need to discuss because Nielsen is gone.
Because Nielsen's gone and we need to talk to the sheriff to see how much, how much pressure that's going to put on their responsibilities? And is there going to be a gap that we need to fill? I think we'll need to adjust the numbers, but I don't know that we may need to dismiss the numbers.
I don't know that the sheriff.
Let me.
He didn't help you, this position didn't help you.
No.
Max?
Max helped you, but not this.
Yes. Let me ask specifically about the benefits first.
I don't, don't ask me because I have no idea why they're that high.
Okay. Isn't that what we've always been told, like?
No, this is, eighty-nine thousand is way high.
I thought that's what we were, like, I recognize that number from prior years when they've, like, I remember Marcia saying eighty-nine thousand.
No, that's really high.
Okay.
We usually say about thirty-three percent of the salary.
If we, if, say if they kept this position, Max, listen to you. Or can we just cut the position down?
I don't think I'm in any position to tell you to cut the position. I don't know what they anticipated. But if that, what was going to be going on with that position in the future?
I would.
He is gone, he's not managing project. I've taken on a lot of his role. Kaylee and Lori are helping out also.
Chief David Beard has been to all.
Yeah, Beard's been sitting in on meetings now. But we have distributed the responsibilities between myself and Lori and Kaylee for the most part. And I don't know what the future of the project manager position itself looks like.
Donnie, do you have anything to say about that? What are the commissioners thinking?
Isn't this?
We don't know for sure either. We know that since Mike has moved on to a different position in his life, we're eighty percent done right now. But what might happen in that next twenty percent? Could we pull somebody in? We've got really good companies that are out there working force and doing all this stuff. But between Max, myself, and Lori and Kaylee are watching every dime that's going on out there to make sure everything's done the right way. That's a lot more responsibility on us. At some point, would we need to bring somebody in short period of time? We don't know. I think it's better to pre-plan than.
Question is, who's making sure the door's swinging the right way right now?
I guess it would be ultimately me and Baird is making the decision.
Yeah, but in other words, somebody, like when you build a house, that last month or whatever, somebody's got to walk around and say, that's not right.
As far as all the control stuff, that is on Baird, it's our, Rattan and myself.
Okay.
I know, I know that Baird is as a project manager, they've all been said. But be mindful too, this is for next year, is what we're funding for.
This isn't county employee, this is a county position.
This is a county, this is a county position. When Commissioner Byer sat down, when Commissioner Byer talked about this position when we met and talked about it, talked about not eliminating it, but reducing the budget amount, the salary amount. So I don't know, Donnie, if you can talk to you.
Well, yeah, I mean, I understand that, without a doubt.
Okay.
Where, and what I'm looking at in a simple way is that we're not, we're, it'll be October. We still got twenty percent left to do on that. So if you cut that in half, is that half all the way through the year from now? Or is that half to the end of the year?
Here's my.
For three months.
Sorry.
No, this is for twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty-five, yeah.
Here's my proposal.
So what you're doing is it would be somewhat available for six months only.
Here's my proposal, this is a, my understanding is a relatively new, recent development. I think we need to table this issue, we need to have some conversations before October. And then we can come back and have a realistic number.
I think that's a good idea.
We're assuming a lot, we don't know.
I think it's a good idea.
I think there's a lot of unknowns right now.
Well, and always remember that this is in jail lit. So this is something that you're paying for, for somebody managing the jail itself. So it's not a project manager for.
Yeah, it can only be paid for somebody that is working on.
Right, it just sounds like we don't know how much it's going to put on Max, we don't know how much it's going to put on other people. So if we could, I think we could have a better idea of that if we take the next few weeks.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm fine with that, can I ask one question?
Sure, ask one question. Go to.
Sure, dude, because the jail lit essentially is for new justices in. Is there a need in your mind as it stands for project management? For your need?
With, not at this time.
Okay.
Not at this time.
And I don't, and the reason I'm asking that, not to say what you're saying doesn't.
Maybe somebody said it on the council, I'm sorry, I didn't see who it was. But I think the key part two this is, is with Max and Mike Beard at those meetings, and they have been at those meetings. Max has been briefing me the last year and a half on what's going on there too. You have, the biggest thing is going to be the punch list is at the end. Because Haggard's building, K G O M Design, Baird is involved. Who's the company that's going to be the punch?
Who's the person, who's the person at the end when it's all said?
I can't do that.
Who's our, I get what you're saying. So at the end of the day, we kind of want to draw our own check, or who's our own person that's doing it? We don't want to, you know, check it, have our own person do it. And my question is, because it's in jail lit, is that, is that kind of what you're saying?
I mean, it's only a specific use.
It's only the use of it is. And I'm not saying that we don't need a project manager. I'm just saying where it sits at, like, does that mean it goes in?
If you have project manager itself somewhere else, that's, it needs to come out of county general. This is out of jail lit, this project.
It sounds like that's what we're talking about though, someone to manage these last, this last twenty-two percent. Like, I know there was like a, I don't want to say.
That's in twenty twenty-four.
Right. Yeah.
So if you're at eighty percent by December, you should be.
Well, Jeff also, Jeff also said the majority of the work done now is change orders, to get this thing done.
Yeah.
That's what he said.
That's what you told me.
But there's going to be work into next year, yeah.
So, okay, so the expansion part won't be done, is my understanding, Max will probably have it next year, is that right?
Yeah, we will still have people on site into April next year.
Because we don't know what the scope is.
I mean, paving, for instance, we will be paving site until next spring. So there will be people on site until spring next year.
If you don't need a project manager, paving.
Okay.
I mean, do you?
I think it's important, I think it's important that you have somebody in place, as with any building that's been built, that can come along. I know when the training center was built back in two thousand, where I worked for twenty-three years, that guy stayed there for six months, walking around. If there was anything that needed to be pointed out, he was the one that found it. He was the one that ensured that it was taken care of without any added expense to the electrical training center there. No extra expense. And I think it's important that somebody stay around, whether it be you or the project manager. But somebody needs to be around.
And that's built into, into Haggard's contract with our building warranty and everything else, so. And Dustin also really follows facilities to be talking to the contractor to get whatever pops up in that first year.
So we're taking.
If the council's okay with holding off until October, that's fine with me, but it's.
Well, I do want to reduce the benefits line, whether you hire somebody or not.
Yeah, the benefits line.
As of this date right now, the last day, he only used eleven thousand dollars of that line. So eighty-nine thousand is just way out of line.
So we can scrap that, I'm fine with that.
You can reduce it, but eighty-nine thousand is just way too much.
What do you suggest?
I mean.
Hundred and twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty thousand would be, yeah.
Do you want me to make a question? I move that we reduce the benefits for project manager line ending in five-one-five-three from eighty-nine thousand to twenty thousand.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Okay, I, I still think we just need to table the project manager until next month, until we have more information.
Yeah, are you okay with that Debbie?
No, but you're the counsel.
Yeah.
You know my position on this.
That's my position.
It's way too much.
I mean, as Donnie said, I think that right now, let's just cut it in half and then we'll talk about it in October.
We'll have a better idea.
I made a motion to cut it in half.
I've moved that we take the project manager salary to forty-five thousand dollars. Line six-six-zero-zero.
Second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Next on the list is, I had talked to Lori after our August meetings. We just want to make one line. We're not changing the amount that is budgeted of eighty-one hundred dollars shredding and trash hauling. We just want to combine those, yeah.
Is the last two thirteen a fortune? Do you want to say, do you want me to make the motion?
Wait, she made it one and I told her to change ours.
Do you want it to be trash and shredding?
We're hard to keep.
The line needs to be trash and shredding, do you want to?
Do you want me to just make a motion to make it one line and then tell you what the line is? Or do you want me to?
It'll just be, we'll make it the three, the one-three.
I moved that we combine the shredding and trash hauling into one line and fund twelve thirty-three to end in the line ending in one-three. At a combined total of eighty-one hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Thank you.
We had also talked about the jail building. The two fifty, the two oh five, how much was that?
Two fifty? Was that?
Two fifty. So we took out of C C D, that we were going to, no, no, this is for the jail building.
Okay.
We removed it from C C D and talked about putting it in here.
Right, the two oh five, right?
Yes.
Two hundred and five thousand.
Was it two five, twelve five?
It was two oh five in the other line.
It was two oh five.
And moving it to, sorry.
To twelve thirty-three. We just make a new line.
The two oh five was in another.
Oh, okay. You want to make it?
C C D, I think.
Because there isn't.
So this is a motion to make, you want to call it jail building? I moved that we trade a new line and fund twelve thirty-three for two hundred and five thousand and naming jail building line.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Thank you.
So are we, what do we end up doing with line?
We haven't done anything.
Four seven one oh construction. So five million?
We took that to zero.
Okay, sorry.
Did you, we did vote on it, didn't we?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would like you guys to have the community corrections, the two hundred and fifty thousand moved up to a salary line, please.
You did tell us.
That way if, if he is wanting to utilize that next year, it's a salary line and not a contract line currently.
But leave it in the same font.
Leave it in the same, we're just moving the two fifty up to the salary line. So that if he pays then it looks more like it's.
Michael Lance.
Yes, yeah, it's a salary and not a contract.
I moved that we move the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for community correction to a salary line instead of a contract line in the same font as you listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Thank you. Sheriff, I have in my notes again back in August, I T services a hundred and fifty-five thousand, new line. Did we already do that, or is that something we're going to discuss?
I think that we did that.
We did that.
We did, okay, thank you.
Good note takers though.
Sean, what is that?
It's a contract, or is that word?
Monday dot com and QuickBooks.
What about Word system?
So that, we're in. That's the one I have an email.
You know what I'm talking about? Is that for them though? But I thought they had something to do with them too.
That's one fifty.
Except.
That's different, that's, we put it P S Lit.
It's in P S Lit?
And you guys put it.
Oh, we did, okay.
This is different, this is Word system, which is the court.
That's a corpse?
And then.
We said it in the proof app too?
You probably need to discuss it if.
Remember that's.
That would be more for this year because they're wanting to pay.
Instead of that twenty percent interest, I would.
Instead of the financing, they want to pay it all.
And then I just had a question for Susan and Debbie, and that is on the revenue side of Lit. with all the adjustments that you talked about at the very beginning of our meeting, will that, we'll just see that come through in the projections of revenues?
Right, yeah, so like the projected revenue went up for twelve thirty-three, the jail lit file.
Yeah.
Um, and it increased in public safety Lit as well, just an increase in, in public safety Lit.
Right.
So.
And at some point, Kenny, will we, as a council, go through, or at least have a discussion about the receipts that are updated? Let's say it's ten million, minus what we believe the expenses to be and the, and the deferred amounts that we wanna put back to save because this will eventually run out, is that something that we will do before we do the gavel in October?
Yes.
Okay, but obviously not, not in this session, but maybe in October, okay. Thanks.
And I think, Brett, do you have anything else other than salary lines in this one?
Well, you got, we were adding, we're adding officers.
Oh, yeah, but those, oh, yes, do you wanna talk about adding officers since we did the coroners?
Yep.
So, was that the one shift where you had four employees, community correction?
No, that's community correction.
No, that's, that's all.
That's my.
Thank you. Justice Center deputies, we talked about that earlier. Those are the guys that are gonna be actually in the running, the body scanners inside the front entrance of the jail, and also dealing with community corrections and probation. As far as what's going on in there, too, if you have a problem inside the facility, they would be dealing with it. If they catch somebody, then they'd be taking them to the jail portion of it.
They will be merit deputies?
They won't be merit deputies, they'll be paid the same as courthouse deputies.
Courthouse, yeah, okay.
Yep. And we were requesting three of those, only because of the fact that if one called it sick, we could have none of them put in.
Mm-hmm.
Original five, or three-year projected plan called for board, but like we talked about earlier, we're gonna try to get in there for the first year and see what we've got. We can get puts on the ground in order to be able to deal with it before we make a move like that.
So, is, um, is the jail commander going in here, is that position salary going in here?
No, jail commander, no, he was staying in PS Lit.
What about, okay, what about work release director?
The only ones that are in here, Jennifer, are the ones that are listed, are the ones that we discussed with the sheriff about adding to twelve thirty-three. So the matron, the communications officers, the Justice Center deputies, and corrections.
Is there updated, um. Spreadsheet, um, well, you have the spreadsheet you sent me.
Yesterday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That shows jail commander, work release director, lieutenant assistant jail commander, staff sergeant, force sergeants, eighteen corrections officers, CO one, one CO two, three CO threes, thirteen CO ones, courthouse transport officer, communication officer, maintenance personnel, jail building, security, jail chaplain.
Um, I don't think we updated that up to a week.
Okay, so this isn't.
It wouldn't be current.
Okay.
It's not on my sheet.
No, because we looked at it and then we changed.
Try to run down, though. Way to go.
That's why I was confused.
Boom. Got any oxygen?
So I was confused.
Thanks for asking. So, we need to, Kenny, do we have to?
Yes, we gotta approve, we gotta discuss his additional officers that we talked about, do whether.
You ready to go for, to discuss your additional officers, Sheriff?
I'm sorry?
Ready to discuss your additional officers?
He did, he just did.
The three, these are just the Justice Center deputies.
Right.
Corrections officers are in there as well, if you wanna talk about that, is what?
Yes.
So, the next one is the corrections officers, we're gonna take it from twenty-eight to forty-seven, additional eighteen officers. One of those being a staff sergeant, we talked about that earlier, just so that we have somebody, the building is expanding. Community corrections will actually oversee work release on that, so I just want somebody in charge of that, that we gotta go to person, um, that's overseeing that operation. I also would like to talk, I had a jail study done by Bill Wilson. Um, in that jail study, it was interesting because he's gonna give me the jail study under Campbell, Nielsen, and then the current one. I didn't have him do it until this point, the building of the facility, because I really didn't know what it was gonna be. So, those numbers will be coming in the next couple of weeks, and I'll be able to share those numbers, and that'll give us a better, um, feel for what is actually needed in that jail. I think you've heard me say it before, and I'll say it again, is that we're never, um, in my opinion, good at making sure that we have ample correction staff inside that facility. I'm not saying that we'll need, whatever his study says, he says I need eighty, I wouldn't expect it overnight, but he'd still give us something to work for him from. Um, and just like we talked earlier, you know, with the jail, we're gonna get through this first year, but what are we gonna need after the first year? What facility have we had, times the number of inmates we have. We're, we're really good numbers right now, as far as numbers for inmates inside our facility, we're average between a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty inmates. We never reached that two-hundred mark while the project was going on, I talked to county attorney when the project was started. And if we got over that two-hundred mark, I probably would have been coming to you all to ask to outsource those to other facilities. Because it's just the sheer lack of, of that facility, so.
So that report is gonna be more of a refined projection of what you're gonna need as he reviews.
That's exactly right.
Is it built, okay, so that'll be your budget document for year two, year three, year four?
It will, but we'll have those projections from the Campbell administration, the Nielsen administration, and then mine to, to be able to go back and look at those other numbers to see where, where we're at that point.
Okay.
So with the officers and that you're asking for, is there, is, is there any way to get by with less, or is that?
My, my numbers are strapped on that, it already makes me nervous, the numbers that we're at, right?
I have to ask.
I know. I gotta answer.
I promise you, I beat him up so bad, I felt horrible. Can, can you get any less? No.
You guys are probably tired of me saying that, but the sheriff's number one liability is that jail, jail department, it's my liability, it's the county's liability.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sheriff.
Yes, it is.
Okay, excuse me.
Uh.
And we knew, it's fair to say we knew that when this, the Justice Center was gonna be built, that the next sheriff was gonna come in and say, hey, we're gonna need plenty more officers to help control this place. Well, I mean, it's great initiative, right, but operations is now, and if you don't, if I don't have the officers, I can't operate, so we'll still be running out of resources, that's it.
There's a phone anchor.
Debbie, outside of those positions, the numbers that got salaries, anything else you missed in your team? Counsel.
We have some lines in the commissioner budget, oh, six-eight.
So we need a motion.
Should we get him about to say?
Oh, yes, oh, sorry, jumping again.
Brittany, share, anything else of you all?
Look, um, I mean, it's more of a max question, but you got forty-six thousand dollars in there for maintenance staff, I don't know, things for me, or.
Oh.
That's his, that's for us.
My one additional.
Yeah.
Just adding point for the.
I have forty-five, is it forty-five?
Forty-five thousand, and then the contract.
Mm-hmm.
The only reason we're having this is because it falls under that line, I just wanna make sure that we don't miss something.
That'll actually go up to a salary line, so it won't, yeah, no, that's for us.
I'm good with that.
We just add them all in the same.
Does our motion have to have the number of positions? Because I don't, I think I got, we went from twenty-seven to forty-eight, and is that right?
Right, twenty.
Twenty-seven to forty-eight, so is that twenty-one plus two plus one?
We'll get forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
Oh.
So you want eighteen new?
Eighteen, eighteen, but I gotta have that, uh, we gotta have that staff sergeant in place, which should have to pay, right, one staff sergeant.
I don't think it's a staff sergeant.
Okay, okay.
So you wanna do.
It does include the staff sergeant, but it's different.
Okay.
So it's your preference, Debbie, that we do.
I don't know if the purpose is, are you asking if we do the actual headcount numbers or the actual salary?
Yeah, I didn't know we needed to specify how many in each headcount.
Sheriff, from the twenty-eight to forty-seven, check the number? Twenty-eight, forty-seven.
It says twenty-eight, those staff sergeants.
But there's forty-eight, that, that, the extra under the staff sergeant, right?
Yeah.
Plus forty-eight, eighteen new citizens. Or you have correctional officers, two Justice Center deputies, and how many community corrections, communication officers?
Yeah.
Three.
So our communications officers, Debbie, we've talked about that, she wants the QuickBooks, twelve twenty-two into the jail line. So, because there's five that are, there's, the time director is one in line, and then our five, um, we have five other employees that are twelve twenty-two. But twelve twenty-two is just a little sustaining those five, and originally, we thought we were gonna hopefully be able to do a new fund, but that's not.
It's not approvably, so I guess, I guess the easiest thing to do is actually approve the requested amount, and they yow that.
The number for, I don't know that you guys have, is that we're including the communication officers?
I mean, I had eight fifty, one thirty-seven as the amount.
That doesn't include the, the other five, twelve twenty-two.
But I, right, but what fund are they in?
She wants to put them in here, into jail line, right?
So, my understanding through you, Debbie. So the.
What?
So, we're trying to figure out whether to put the requested for the motions, do you want us to do the actual requested amount, dollar amount, or the headcount? So, or communication officers?
Just the dollar amount. But do you wanna move those five, or leave the eight fifty and leave those others in twelve twenty-two, or do you want to?
You wanna bring them over here?
Twelve twenty-two to here.
Leave them in twelve twenty-two? You wanna bring them over?
We can't, we don't have enough in twelve twenty-two because the MOUs aren't gonna be signed, right?
No, they won't. Oh, they won't use, the designs that you saw, they reduced their, you know, they only had one police officer.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you and I talked about it, and we were just meeting with them, and then they said they don't have anybody, so we're trying to figure that out, so.
So should we move them over here? So how much is that gonna take this eight fifty up to, pretty, that's, that's gonna, that's gonna jump that number.
Yep.
One million, one sixty-one, seven oh four.
Tell me that number again.
One million, one sixty-one, seven oh four.
One, one million, one sixty-one, seven oh four?
And not to interrupt your motion construction here, Aaron, but at some point, are we gonna, are we gonna have an accounting of what's in jail Lit? I mean, I, I, and again, like, if I start at ten million minus. Yeah, and again, I know I just asked Kenny about October, going through it, but I almost, like, I don't, like a turtle on my back, I don't know who's. I don't, I don't know how much money is in the ten million.
I don't wanna, Mr. Walker?
Because that's such a.
Are you, are you, are you doing an accounting of all what we're doing up here? I don't, okay, can we get an accounting of what's in jail Lit when this is all set?
Do you have it in front of you at twelve thirty-three, you have a packet of information that's not put together?
Got it.
I thought it was in shirts.
Oh, right here. That's this tickle?
It's like you read our mind before we even knew it. Is this big thing?
That's what, yeah.
I did not mean to disrupt the motion.
No, I didn't, I won't, well, I can't, I can't make it, it's not about.
It should be a numerical order by sun, and it's in the left corner.
No, it's, twelve, twelve thirty-three.
It's rare spelled wrong, so, okay. Sure, I'm sorry, it's E, it's O R, not E R. And voters is E R.
What was five, the first one?
I can't.
Pretty sure.
I seriously don't have it.
Well, I think jail Lit.
I think jail Lit, yeah.
Scott, do you have any idea where it is? I mean, spoon feeding.
Yeah. Better.
Yeah, I think.
I think so. Back rooms, county council.
Commissioner.
Is there, can you give us an, a, a, one up?
Am I finding?
No.
Nope, not in there. I found a couple spelling errors, so. I'm sorry, it's.
I'm sure that's just that Butler education you got.
Right.
Doesn't scream out at some of you there, like, when you see something, was, was it just me, or, it just screams out at me, it's like.
I, I think that I have to know how to spell it first.
Well. But, but she's gonna let us take, we're gonna take the community corrections officers out of twelve twenty-two, the five, Scott, the twelve thirty-three. So it's gonna take line, what is that? Twelve, what is that, eleven twenty-two?
He's trying to seal his thing.
Twelve twenty-two.
Twelve thirty-three, I think it's gonna end up in.
Twelve twenty-two, I'm sorry. Gonna take twelve twenty-two up to one million, one sixty-one, one seventy-four.
Yeah.
So then, Scott, that's gonna be the biggest difference. Flunk it, don't look so excited, your turn is next.
But if you don't find a way to get them in twelve thirty-three, which is where I feel they should be, or put them in county general, because twelve twenty-two cannot.
Right, no, yeah, I was just.
Not with that, not with the MOUs.
Just trying to see how much we're, we've thrown into twelve thirty-three, that's it, not, no, yeah.
Scott, I know it's gonna take you a second to do that, but.
He shows it, six point six million.
He showed it at six point six, oh, you showed it at six point six?
That's what my spreadsheet showed, I don't know if I have, like, I'm trying to keep up with all your changes.
It's better than what I don't have.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I have project manager at forty-five, benefits for it at twenty, matron seventy-four, nine seventy, the communication officers, one, one million, one sixty-one, seven oh four. Justice Center deputies, one fifty-four, five eighty-four, uh, correction officers, two million, five forty-one, five seventy-six, uh, maintenance, it may be, it may be better, I think, because maintenance staff got changed to. Well, that's, we don't know.
I have, I have stuck two hundred there.
That's what I have there, but I thought we said forty-six.
Let me, let me.
Forty-five.
Let me, let me.
I heard notes say forty-five.
So it's a forty-five, let's make it forty-five.
I think the new person was forty-five that he added, I'm happy with that.
Okay.
So let me, what, is that staff maintenance?
Maintenance staff, yeah.
Maintenance staff, yeah, forty-five is what I have now.
Six point five, it's getting better and better. Thank you, just wanted to get a, one of these. But, we're gonna keep going.
What, you ran away?
That is your candy.
I know.
Oh, come on, so much fun.
Should I move twelve twenty-two down, just so twelve thirty-three?
Made it halfway through the car.
What are you, is it the, uh?
Dispatcher, three-eleven?
No, we're talking about Lit.
I'm gonna make a motion, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, we're back at it.
All right, I'm gonna go to, am I going to twelve twenty-two? All right, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm taking it out of twelve twenty-two to put it in twelve thirty-three.
Okay.
And move that we take the dispatchers out of twelve twenty-two and move them to twelve thirty-three specifically to the line of the communications officers. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved to second, is there any further discussion?
One-one, six-one, seven oh four, per, appropriately.
Thinking the new total, one-one, six-one, seven oh four, yes.
Thank you.
It's been properly moved to second, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
So, with that, now, Scott, if you could, uh, personally click on it. I wanna go see that.
Including the one.
I trust it.
One-one, six-one, the new total for the, he is communication officer line, I think he was, one-one, six-one, seven oh four, because he just moved it to one.
I didn't realize, I knew it was paying less, like a hundred or ten thousand to be a project manager, but I didn't really get any of that far.
I don't think that was real, it was inflated and he never got paid that, so, I'm not sure how it got. I thought it was just a way to hide the slush money, it was like.
Yeah. You're under longer mine.
Those Dixie choppers. No, I don't, I don't think they know.
You know, the reality is, it's about twenty thousand. But didn't they say, though, that normally, like, a third, third of the, third of the salary goes to benefits?
Which, again, so it should be thirty.
Unless they put them in.
But there's, there's a cap on that, too, though, I mean, you know, the, the turn costs are fixed. Uh, workers' compensation does come into play, and that's gonna follow with that.
Hey, Senator, I'm sorry, don't let see your notes on the staff for maintenance at the jail, and see if you approve forty-five thousand or two hundred thousand.
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Because you're gonna do contract on the other two people that use hundreds.
Oh, that's right, because you're gonna, you're gonna count forty-five people. That's right, we were gonna, we were gonna do contracts for other people that match.
One, one employee, and the other one, somebody had to oversee it.
With dental insurance, is it good for braces still?
We know dental is a good one.
Poor them.
We're in the middle of braces right now.
Uh.
Could you inflate it one more year?
Sorry, okay. I think it's net, net better.
Oh, it is net, net better, but. Oh, it is net, net better, but general coverage, visual coverage is very good.
They pretty much, my son, they pretty much paid him a hole, and my daughter, it's.
Really?
Yeah, the current one, and it had another one, the whole, no, it's still paying it on hers, like, they still get, like, they're still. But they also had adult coverage. Our kind also had adult coverage.
Oh, fuck, hey, Kenny.
Really? Wow. Well, I had, I think caps put in, and if you played order, fourteen calories.
Are you serious? So I was, put your money where your mouth is.
Yeah, I sure did.
Gives it a whole new meaning.
Yeah, my, um, my dental insurance paid twelve hundred bucks.
Sorry. I was, my daughter was not buying dental, so my mom would be doing the line on my back, and so I was gonna do it, because insurance is gonna cover a good chunk, and I'm like. Well, I was gonna wait until the repairs were done. Yeah, I guess they could.
You've never had a cavity? I had to have two, extra, and a front.
You've never had a cavity? Oh, my gosh, I should have put this down there.
So, we're, we're gonna actually.
It's called the G's, my dad is that way, my grandmother, both, I'm all T's.
Okay.
We'll review that, but at this point.
We got one more, he needs to do his courthouse there.
Yeah, we've got two more, actually.
We got two more things to do.
No, the order do those salaries, commissioners have different non-salary lines that I'd like to get taken care of.
Yes, we'd like to get commissioners, non-salary line taken care of, but then we'll, then we'll go back to the list and fix this up.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure everything's done, and then salaries.
Salaries, we can do right at the end, and move on. So with that, the commissioners' lines that we need to look at.
I don't care, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
He does have additional requests for employees, so we'll adjust them.
We talked about it.
We talked about it, we just never approved it.
But we never approved, what is it, the two courthouse deputies, one was a transport deputy that would work with the jail and do all the transports for the court, or went in exclusively, and then the other was the merit, the other.
I'm sorry, we have on the record that we approved these, we never approved the salary amounts, because Jennifer abstained from.
I've seen from both, I mean, thank you, but if we did do it all.
She has, she has them as approved, and she abstained from.
Just, just.
Just not the amount.
No, not the amount, she hasn't approved for the position.
The position was approved.
She has, she has the position approved.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
I thought we, that's what I said, I, I thought.
I still had it on my list, and I just wanna make sure.
I thought, I thought we approved them, too, I just thought we didn't approve the amount.
Salaries, no.
Yeah.
Just the salary part.
I didn't have them on my list as the discussed.
Me either.
Yeah.
I just have the salary.
I just have the salary.
We discussed everything last time.
Yeah, yeah, we haven't approved, we just don't have the salaries, no.
Yeah, I already had them now.
So they're not gonna get paid.
Right.
They gonna get paid.
From the looks of it, there's some other employees that are being.
Did I tell you my rose not paid?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you're good.
Did I tell you my rose not paid?
They just, yeah, they're, they're approved, they just don't have the salaries.
That's funny.
Yeah, that's it, yeah, you're good. Nope, you're good.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheriff, thank you.
Yeah, you'll be back.
Thank you.
We need you to stay, sir.
Sheriff, hey, Mr. Sheriff. Tell them we're not adoring the buildings, they'll bring that back to us. Okay, where are we at now?
So, we're talking on the commissioners.
Donnie.
Oh, oh, six, eight.
And, and the four H, uh, fair. We, we budgeted that at a hundred and thirty-five last year, I don't think there was any increasing in that one.
I thought we approved it.
Well, let's make sure, okay.
I said, I have approved eight fifteen.
What line number?
Yeah.
I would only write that, like, if we did, like, by the line, I would write one approved, and only approve the whole thing, I would.
You approved highway, is that?
Yeah, we approved highway.
But I, I marked that specifically for those lines.
Start a truck.
We approved four H at a hundred and twenty-five, is that right?
I have a missing.
Was rest of them down, ten thousand?
Four H, the one thirty-five.
We don't, we don't have this.
This is, all right, let's go through it.
I have, I have in mind, okay, eight fifteen, twenty-four, with a notation.
Yeah.
That line numbers, uh, seven zero five three road preservation was up for discussion table for now, for two point eight, two point eight seven four eight nine seven.
Yeah.
So do we.
Right here.
That was up for discussion, but road preservation line.
Yeah, I don't, we're a good commission, uh, commission, but. How much is that?
Uh, the four H fair was one thirty-five.
Are we approving that submitted?
That one, yeah, I, I don't see, I don't know any reason to not do.
What line is that?
I don't see.
I don't see it either.
Six, eight, five, six.
Second page about this line now.
Six, eight, five, six.
Yeah, six, eight, five, six.
Yeah, we went through this week, and we, we went, we explained why senior services would increase.
I didn't do that one, because that was from the contract.
Right, now we split the contract, how about Art?
Somebody asked on the council for, before you did the Art, if we could get some kind of our financial report, and we haven't seen that, so I'm gonna have to prove that.
When you say Art, you mean a file?
No, I mean.
Now, Art is, is different, it was at a hundred and sixty thousand, so.
Yeah.
So I'm keeping the four H fair at one thirty-five?
Yeah.
Art at one sixty?
Yeah, I think we already approved it.
I have approved on here, too.
Yeah.
But, yeah, okay, we'll do, yeah, make sure.
Senior services, yeah.
Senior services at one twenty?
The only changes we made last time was road pres- preservation, we increased it to two eight seven four eight nine seven. We took the Aspire contract up to, that contract changed, it's four eighty, zero nine six.
Yep, that's what I have.
Do you hear that, Debbie?
Yes, I have, yes.
And then we keep senior services at one twenty?
Yes, because that's a contracted amount.
And the telephone was.
HR consulting.
Two new cell phone, uh, lines, tracking devices on cars, yep.
What do we do with HR consulting?
We left it at ten thousand.
We're still at eighty-five percent, HR consulting?
Where's that?
Uh, three lines from the bottom.
Six, eight, eighty?
Yeah.
Yep. Six, eight, eighty. About to drop the total contract change.
Yeah, it was, um.
Couple new lines that was added, right?
Tracking devices on cars, two new cell phone lines.
Yeah. I make a motion to approve zero, zero, six, eight, as submitted, minus salaries.
It's all right, Kenny.
Increasing, we've already increased road, road preservation to two eight seven four eight nine seven, increase Aspire to four eighty, oh nine six.
Well, we've got HSA, we haven't discussed the HSA.
Or salaries.
So I said minus salaries, and.
HSA, minus HSA?
Where's HSA?
Which is the medical line, health insurance line.
And minus HSA slash health insurance, I can't see where that is.
Where is it?
On the first page.
Thank you.
I'll second it. Yeah, they probably moved it second, any discussion?
Do we, we have, we also have in here a county project manager position for ten thousand?
Yeah, that was rollover, because remember, the, the, the project manager, there was ninety percent, whether ninety thousand was out of ones, or ten thousand.
Probably adjust her salaries.
I was about to say.
Because I said minus salaries.
Minus salaries, so that's gonna be out right now.
You were adjusting it, okay.
Well, that's out right now.
Okay.
Is HSA in insurance?
Yes.
So, motion.
It's been second.
Oh, it has, okay.
Yes, it has been second.
It's just a discussion on that, I just want to.
So we need a third, so we need a third.
Sherry wants to add a new procedure to that.
Stop. Jewel's.
Do you see any other things?
I'm just, I'm just gonna be going through it.
Okay.
Give me one second, I'm trying to make sure.
Jennifer, is Johnny on the spot?
I have the. Yes, she, she paid her homework.
Yeah, I need to.
Do the road preservation, did we adjust the training?
No. It's at ten thousand. They came down, they worked fifteen this year, so they came down to ten. I feel like they did talk about what that was for. Do you know what the training was for?
My page.
Any other discussion?
For ten thousand.
And what do we do with the indirect consult?
Right, the, what we're.
But what do we discuss on that?
It came down twenty thousand.
I don't, we didn't do anything with it last time, there was indirect consulting, I was making a motion, so we can do.
I didn't have this mess approved, so I don't.
Hmm, okay.
So.
Ready to vote?
Yeah.
So the indirect consultant.
I still have an eighty-five thousand.
Eighty-five, yeah.
Yep.
On the indirect consultant.
Yeah.
Because it was reduced by twenty thousand.
Yeah.
It went from a hundred five eight hundred.
So they probably moved it seconded, is there any further discussion? If not, all those papers seen by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All post same side? Aye. All righty, now we need to go back and talk about the insurance and HSA, uh, you've got some of that paperwork in front of you. Uh, and it kinda goes back to what Justin was talking about earlier, uh, with, uh, mental health. So, mental health is gonna be, is something that has been talked about in the insurance committee, and so there is a, a plan that's, that they put together, a- and I think the eight, uh, for the mental health, they added another eighty-some thousand, excuse me, eight thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Eight thousand dollars, sorry.
Only three zeros, sorry.
Apologize.
That's all right.
Uh, so he's gonna add approximately eight thousand dollars for that, uh, I also, I, well, we talked about it last month, it was something that, that, I wanted Debbie to look at, too, because, you know, that was something that Debbie pushed for also, that she really thought it needed to be for countywide. So this does have, uh, twelve visits, uh, per employee, uh, and it's all so that nobody knows if somebody needs mental health, uh, issues, that, uh, there's no tracking of it whatsoever.
Correct.
Uh, so that's what we want to, to make sure of, and fishnet was, uh, a part of this.
All informed.
My only, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
My only question, Debbie, was, when the coroner came, and we talked about mental health, but if, he's in that lane of tra- trauma and,
First responders.
So would that be pathways that he could go to? Because I don't remember if we talked about that.
Well, we kind of, I think skipped over it, but I was gonna ask Tony if there would be a way to include the coroner in his, and then whether we reimburse him from County General at some point.
Okay.
I mean, we could, we could do that from this medical line, if any of his deputies needed.
If he felt like he needed to be there and see you.
And then would we have a cost associated with that, because that would be outside the eight thousand, or would that be part of their contract, and we would just?
It would be part of the.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there would be a, some kind of, um, charge back to, to the coroner, but maybe not.
No, it would just be County General, I mean, if any, if any employee, it's not necessarily medical, and so it's just all in another line, but.
So Brittany, could, could the coroner use pathways for trauma-related counseling instead of the regular counseling that, or proprietary, you guys know if that's an option?
And then you could, and then County General could pay you if those services were used.
Or we could just have her, like.
Or bill the county.
They could bill the county for that.
Okay.
Is that, is it gonna work that way?
Yeah, but I, I would, I would think that would be the only way it could work, because I don't know who's what number, so.
Right.
And I wouldn't, if they would just split it at pathways.
Will that need to be part of our motion eventually?
Yeah.
If it makes it simplify. Is it, Vince, the coroner is a little bit more on that path of, of.
Yeah, of trauma.
It's the trauma side of it.
Right. Exactly, yeah, so we, this, this proposal of eight thousand dollars is based on two hundred and seventy-four employees, does that carve out the sheriff's department? So they're not included in that head count, okay.
Yeah.
Good point. Okay.
So, and then, the other part of the contribution, I don't know, we're kinda winging it here, Donnie, I don't know if you can help us out a little bit, on the, uh, HSA, and maybe Sherry and, and.
Dan can probably run.
And Dan, because we got, like, three different options. A thousand, thousand dollars upfront, uh, proposal two is a thousand dollars, and it looks like another seven fifty or something.
That's for the wellness.
Yeah, I, yeah, that's wellness.
Yeah, that's the wellness part of it?
Right, the HSA proposal, if I believe that we were front-loading last year, we front-loaded everything into every employee's, uh, account. And our concerns are, if, if somebody leaves at month number one, or two, or three, that they take that with them, there's no way to retrieve that back. So we thought it would be in everybody's best interest, if we broke the contribution up, uh, the total contribution, annual contribution of twelve hundred dollars, and, uh, first distribution of six hundred dollars would be, uh, put in their account in January, and six hundred dollars in May.
I have one question, because that has been something, we've, that's been a concern every year, and the other concern with that is, is, but the first few months is when everyone's having, like, meet their deductible, so their bills are higher, so that's why we were doing the full thousand or twelve hundred upfront, was to help offset that deductible.
Does, and it kinda works both ways, because what Dan just said is exactly right, is if you do it, then there's, there's people that's leaving, taking that. But, but if you don't, like I say, a lot of the bills are front-loaded, you know, where you gotta make sure deductible, so.
Yes.
It's, it's a double-edged sword on which, and that's the reason why you're trying to split it, because.
Yeah.
Because honestly, when the HSA started, it sounds old, I mean, when we first started it, it was two hundred and fifty dollars, and went to five hundred, what? And, and now we're looking at going quarter to twelve hundred and fifty per employee, or, yeah. Twelve hundred, so, you know, it's.
Twelve hundred for family.
If we do that, could we open the possibility of being able to earn the wellness credit?
We could, I mean, we can, we can adjust that, too.
Before May and October?
I'm sorry.
If we do that, could we change it where you can earn your wellness credit earlier, to help offset your deductible costs?
That depends on the structure, I believe that we could do that.
I was gonna say, they're offering that wellness credit for several different things now, and I was thinking, I thought, as soon as you, if you finish that, like, I don't know, we've had different, at least, like, it would be six weeks long, and then if you finish that, I thought you got your wellness credit right then, so you could.
It's out in May and November, May, November, yeah, so like, if you finish everything in January or February, you have to wait until, like, the last pay in May, or the last pay in November, to get it.
So we could change that.
The only thing is, we just need to make sure it's structured, uh, I was talking with, with Debbie, is, you know, even, there's one thing here, it's talking about quarterly, well, you know, they gotta actually change the salaries, new stuff, if they do that, so twice a year is really better for the auditors office, than to do it more often, if I'm, if I correct in saying that.
It's a lot of manual work, so, to do it quarterly is.
Okay.
I mean, it, it just, with us having to get the information.
Yeah.
And then, I have somebody has to hand enter it and change the financial system to reference the new amounts, it's, I mean, it's kind of a process, to be doing it every, you know, three months.
Speaking of wellness, uh.
If you could do it, I would be more than willing to do it three times a year. If you wanted to do, I mean, but you have to remember, HR has to get the information and verify it, and then it comes to us, so you're looking at at least a ten day term right there, so. I mean, it's not just a, you get a credit, and then four years later, we can have a check.
And I think wellness is now gonna be managed internally, so we save twelve thousand dollars going forward, I believe, on a wellness expense that we didn't have, so there might even be a better ability to make the timing of these wellness activities to, to line up with your.
Right.
Quarterly or.
In an October, or something.
Right, yeah.
So we, we dictate the flexibility.
Yeah, that's what.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. Any questions on that component?
These are all, I mean, what, what's the cost of doing that with the HSA, does it have a total cost, does it, she doesn't?
Current HSA contribution, contribution upfront in January, if it's a thousand dollars, or depending on how we break that up, current through the wellness program. Current through the wellness program, five hundred dollars, with the total, what's the three twenty-eight? Oh, that's proposal.
So it is.
Three eighty-two, five hundred, you're right.
Is the proposal to do twelve hundred for family enrollment, or is that employee?
You said family, Dan, is that right?
It's employee.
Employee, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Looks like you go on a thousand dollars, or a hundred thousand dollars.
So it's costing the county an extra hundred thousand dollars.
So it looks like, am I reading her, yeah, am I reading her information right? I don't know.
Three eighty-two, basically, the four ninety-seven?
Am I reading that right, Dan?
I am not.
Because it looks like there's a proposal one, a proposal two, and then an insurance committee proposal. The insurance committee proposal is a half and half.
Right.
I think that's right, and this assumes.
And four ninety-seven to fifty in total.
And this assumes that those employees on one-one are staying throughout the year, when in fact, again, we don't know. But, but real-life data would say, we, we might save ourselves, we, we probably won't spend the four ninety-seven, because some people will leave and they won't take with them the extra. And then there's twelve thousand.
But in reality, we don't have that much turnover, but.
No, I, I'm just saying, but part of the reason we were doing it the way we were, was because we were trying to ward off that.
I think the, the way the state does it is, they pay like half upfront, and then the remaining half is paid out over each paycheck, or the remaining paychecks.
Okay. But that creates problems for the auditor, you would rather do two payments on that. That's on the HSA, correct?
I mean, if we could set it up that way, we, we could set it up to do it that way, I just don't know what.
Yeah, I, I understand the concern, I agree, I don't want someone to get the whole thing if they were going to turn around and leave February first. I just know, like, a lot of, like, I know a lot of kids, they have to have physicals before April, like fifteenth, for the next school year. And so a lot of parents are trying to get all those things covered, and that was why we were doing the full.
Right. Well, and, you know, that's, that's our recommendation, is split it in half. But it could be, you know, eight hundred and four hundred, you know, we can, we can set it up however. I just, I really, I really struggle in giving twelve hundred dollars upfront.
No, I, I understand. Debbie?
Well, as someone who takes the insurance, I think the split is not a bad idea, and I have, I don't have little ones, but you have to realize too, everything then happens first of the year. You may, there could be something happen, you know, mid-year, and you still have that extra money kind of coming in. So I see both sides, but honestly, the fact that it's there at all is a bonus.
Yeah.
And so, twice a year, I think a lot of people are just grateful to get it at all.
Okay.
This projection also assumes, Kenny, that everybody's getting the seven fifty, which you have to earn.
Yes.
And I don't think everybody takes the advantage of that.
Not everybody's going to do that.
So I think that's the gross amount that it could be.
I just want to point out it's a real number, too.
It, it is.
Right, so, but along with the other, the last part of whether we approve the health insurance is the long-term disability. So that was something else that the insurance committee talked about. That is going to be an added cost between forty and forty-five thousand, sad long-term disability.
Exactly.
Now, my understanding from the meeting yesterday, Donnie, is that is already in the budgeted amount. These amounts are already in the budgeted amount.
Which ones?
Well, for the, the HSA, long-term disability and the mental health, you know, for sure. I thought Megan said it was already in there, we'd have to change.
That's right, that's right.
So we're not changing the amount that.
Are those numbers aligned, numbers here? Right, so, so what Debbie said, we're not changing the, the numbers that we have before us. If we approve this, these are the things, but we want to make sure that we make the motion that we're including these things, because in a sense, if people go down and we don't include these things.
Right. And I know in, at the commission meeting yesterday, that the mental health and the long-term disability contracts are waiting for approval from council for the commissioners to sign.
So, comments from the council on the, go ahead, again.
Now, you want to talk about the long-term disability?
Yes, go ahead.
Because that's not, that's not a benefit that we offer at the present time. Long-term disability gives, is a benefit after, after ninety days, if a person is disabled, and they work at least thirty hours weekly, they're paid sixty percent of their income. And a minimum benefit of fifty dollars a day, elimination period at the end is ninety days, and that's a deductible in time. So they have to be off for ninety days. And we may want to look at an optional supplementation through Aflac or somebody for short-term disability, because you can bridge that gap and only have a month in elimination period.
And we do, they do have that option.
And I know that Aflac is available here, yes, exactly. Maximum, pre-existing conditions, three twelve, residual benefit, yes, employer contribution a hundred percent, participation one hundred percent. Long, the most, the biggest asset that any person in their, in their, in their career has is their ability to earn income. And if that's taken away, then the family is without income.
It's their health.
That's right. Yeah.
And right now, we do offer short-term and long-term through One America, that the employee pays a hundred percent for. And then they could also pick up an Aflac policy.
Short-term, yes.
To subsidize both short-term, I guess.
And one thought was that if this, if this was provided, they might be more incented and would have the income to put towards just the short-term.
Right.
So it might be a softer landing.
And you have some employees that go in for a six-week procedure, and the next thing they know is three months later, and they're out of PTO time.
Absolutely.
They're wondering how, you know, enforce the health back.
With this new short-term, how much do you pay?
On long-terments.
It's, it's a combination of age and income.
Do we have?
And elimination period, so it's a tiered.
Pay maternity leave? I've never used it.
You have it? We do have paternity and maternity.
Is it paid?
Paid, yes.
Four weeks.
Because you can use.
I opted out of that.
You can use short-term.
It depends on, it depends on the structure of the policy. I, I mean, there are policies that do offer that, there are policies that exclude that, so.
Our current policy includes that.
I'm kind of disappointed we only offer four weeks.
Four weeks for maternity and four-fold to half, paternity is two.
I haven't got any time left for that. That's, that's a new thing, they order, so. So we're ready to make a motion on this health insurance stuff.
We want to, I mean, we need to say out loud that we.
Out loud.
No, I meant that dental vision, the dental vision change, or the, anything else.
The dental, the dental change was going back away from Delta, going back to what we used to have. Reliant, so.
Delta was not beneficial. The county found two residents of Boone County, as there were only a couple riders that took Delta insurance, so.
And that's, that's a problem, that's, 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 that's in, in the industry. It's not specific to any one carrier.
Right.
It's regional in the problematics that it has. If you're in a more populated area, and you've got more dentists to sign up, because the insurance companies do buy down the benefits or the services that are offered by the dentist.
The only other thing, Kenny, and again, just the twelve thousand dollar savings, if, when wellness is taken over internally. And then within the insurance committee, we talked about going forward, without getting into too much detail, maybe a steerage that may result in some savings. So I think a year from now, it'll be interesting to see if, some of the things that have been incorporated into the next year's plan may result in some big savings. We'll, we'll just have to see, but.
So I, so I guess my question is, with the wellness possibly coming to the county, what kind of transparency does that give our employees?
I'm not sure what your question is, transparency to what level?
What are, what is HR going to see off of our?
Yeah, I spoke to Megan about it, because they're not going to see the blood, your, when you do the analysis or anything like that. They're not going to see the medical side of it.
No.
But we also need to change the, I feel like, and I talked to Megan about it, to change the name from actually, what's it called now? The Wellness Program to, to, we, we need to change it so that it's more of a, it's a program. It's a wellness program, or, because it, it makes it sound like, I, I guess, the employees doesn't want to feel like that somebody in the HR department has their records and looking at everything all the time.
Right, there's, there's.
It's, it's not, they're not, and they're not doing it, but the name kind of insinuates that they're seeing.
What HR will be able to see is whether or not you participate.
Right, so.
They don't know the results of any of the tests.
So it needs to be, you know, the, the participation side of it is what it's about, not, not actually the.
That's right.
So I don't know.
So like currently, say you go to the doctor for your annual exam, we send that to a website, right? Or to an email right now.
Right.
I mean, but that's telling them, listen, everything that we've had done and the results of it. What, what are we going to provide HR to get that same credit?
I've always, the only thing I ever had was my doctor just sent something that I had, like, physical.
The, the physical was done, the blood panels were done, maybe not even that, but blood tests were done.
Well, the form used to show.
Yeah, the form used to show all your BMI, your A.
So it just needs to be that you had the physical done.
I completed this, yes.
Yes, I completed the physical with the doctor, and that's it. So. Well, I agree with you, that's right. So now, I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay.
To, if, if, if.
Helpful, yeah.
With these changes, because if, if, the number is in here, as Debbie just stated, the number is in the budget, but it, it does add different costs by doing what we're doing, especially the HSA. But I know the employees benefit from that, to have that contribution, so. With that being said, is, do you have a motion?
So just literally walk through these things, is that all right?
Well, I think.
Actually, you can just approve the insurance line in the commission budget.
Okay.
We don't have to add, I mean.
We don't have to add anything, from my understanding.
And we don't have to say coroner pathways and all that?
No, no.
So that's.
So the five one nine six six nine one, that includes the twelve hundred HSA, and up to seven thirty.
That's the way I understood, Megan, yes.
I make a motion to approve line five one two two, as presented and assuming that includes the HSA proposal of a twelve hundred dollar contribution, half in January, half in May, and up to seven thirty dollars in wellness dollars. And assuming that includes the long-term disability insurance. And the expansion of the EAP program.
Second?
Yeah, we don't need to add any of this other stuff, right?
Second?
Has been properly moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? If not, all those favors, same by saying aye?
Aye.
All post same sign. Thank you for your research, I'm waiting for you to gather all the hard work you've.
Thank you, thank you.
Now, where are we at, Debbie?
Um, salaries, I believe.
Salaries.
We just read for you.
Thank you for the insurance. Oh.
Yeah.
Scott, just give you a form, I guess.
Very good.
I'll be right back. I'm going to head back for it, too.
This is just going here.
This sheet is a little bit confusing.
Okay.
Because it's an operational sheet, doesn't it, a financial statement sort of. So I've actually got this projected out to twenty forty-three, and the money that's coming in. And, and obviously, you will reestablish your rate at that point, it's a secret. It, that'll depend on your census, the amount of money that's coming in, all that sort of thing. So if we take a look, let's go all the way down to the bottom, you see a green number of ten million, two ninety-two.
Right.
That's the amount that isn't expected. Okay, twenty twenty-five. We broke up that income into the two green pieces there, because for operational purposes, which is different than financial statement purposes, what we want to do is we want to say, what covers the project and what covers operations? The project cover also includes the debt service amount. So if we take a look at what we have passed already, we see if we apply five point five million dollars to the, to the project itself, we come up with the, the project manager amount and the debt service, which is four point two three six. Okay? That equates four point three million dollars. In subsequent years, that goes to five million seventy-two thousand.
It goes where?
In subsequent years, the next year goes to five million seventy-two thousand. And then the, the bond is a lease rental revenue bond, so therefore, the payment stays consistent for the next twenty years. For nineteen years, or whatever the interest is. So, our net contribution cash, home one eight eight six, based, just based on those numbers here. Now, if we take a look at operations, we didn't get it to the operations section, and we would run, if we, if we allocated fifty-five percent to forty, uh, to forty-five percent, we would run a deficit of one point nine million dollars, and a total net contribution to cash is seven, negative seven hundred sixty-seven thousand or fifty-four. That goes up for, till twenty thirty-two, the deficit goes up to twenty thirty-two. And the reason why is because the amount of debt service that we get goes up, and as the rate starts to go up every year, it's not the rate, it's the total amount collected, starts to go up every year, then the percentage of our debt of the total amount goes down. And so we will lose for a while, and then all of a sudden, we'll start gaining at about twenty thirty-three, we start gaining until twenty forty-three. Okay? So we'll have a nice cash balance, based on this model at twenty forty-three. All of the statistics that are put in here include raises, and they include the, the cost of living increase, okay?
What is the raise amount?
The raise amount, I believe is, I have to go back, I think it's five percent.
Five percent.
But in the cost of living is what?
It's four percent.
Okay.
So, so what we, we have, we should have a, a residue of cash of about seven point seven million at the end of this year, which gives us a projected ending cash of seven oh five seven. At twenty thirty-two, that takes us, because of the deficit spending for the first five years, which is expected, that's why we have to have a cash balance here. It'll take us down to three million dollars. So our reserve will only be three million dollars.
But, but after that, when we see that, we see the hockey stick, hockey puck go right there.
After twenty thirty-two.
Can you send us the?
Oh, yes, I will.
Okay.
It was just too, he was, it's too long to break.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So, yeah, I, I will send you all of that, and I, I just want to make sure that I vet the rest of that. We, we vetted all of this before we go down. So that's what it looks like, our.
Just a small number, I thought we cut out this office supply at the top.
Okay.
Just ten thousand five hundred.
I, I didn't have it, but he had it, so maybe I missed something, so.
It's small, underground.
Here, here we are, here, maintenance staffs, forty-five thousand, some have two hundred thousand.
I had two hundred thousand, and she told me that it was down to forty-five.
I think it's forty-five, too, because it's contracts.
It's contracts.
We'll have to go back.
Contract of labor.
Here's the thing, if we take it up based on these numbers, even if we take it up, if we add the additional one fifty-five, I mean, I hope you all feel comfortable, we can, we can pay for it, adding a hundred.
So, Scott, I guess I have a question.
Yes.
Where are you coming up with the additional three million dollars for twenty twenty-five?
Where's that at?
Where's the twenty twenty, where's talking about additional?
I'm not going to need it, it's a quit.
What are you talking about, your additional?
So you're saying projected ending cash for twenty twenty-five is seven million?
Yes.
We're projecting it at a little over three. We're projecting it at a little over three, about four.
Now, oh, it depends on, let me see, let, let me touch my other, my, my.
Because we don't look at purpose, we just look at whether you spend it, what you're going in, what you spend.
Yeah.
And then, and my twenty twenty-four spend.
Well, anticipating twenty twenty-four, we should have about five million dollars at the end of twenty.
Okay, I have got, I don't know how to do this. Yeah, I may be, I, I may be incomplete in my, I have seven point seven million dollars worth of expenditure, two point two million additional construction equipment, an additional two million dollars for the communications equipment, and three point four million dollars for the lease rental everybody. And I don't have a whole lot more expenses than that, two million dollars, I think, so my.
About two million, where?